Good evening. Welcome to the January 27th Groseal Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Nothing? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight. Next is public comment. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to... Remember, this public comment is anything. You'd like to talk about up to three minutes? Everybody good? Is anybody... Oh, come on up, sir. Kyle, you know the deal. If you can just give your name.
Yes, Kyle DeBose, West River Road, Groseal. First meeting, I'm here to be able to see a lot of you. Really good to see you up there. I really mean that. I think you all are doing a great job and you're confronting a lot. I wrote some things and just wanted to speak some of that out to you all in person. But yeah, I'm just trying to figure out ways to stay involved. And what I want to continue to do is just really focus on things that I've learned that I think a lot of folks on Groseal and really across Downriver care deeply about. One of those things is infrastructure that works for all of us. I know you all are focused on bridges, but it's not just us. The rest of Downriver is worried a lot about that sort of thing too, whether it's Woodhaven and that Van Horn Crossing or the West Road Viaduct. You know, that stuff we can use help from the federal and state government for. So that's something I want to be pushing on. Environmental stuff that you all know that I care deeply about is something I want to keep pushing on as well. Actually, I have some good news on that front. When I was up there on the board, I pushed pretty hard on Hennepin Point to get some information on dust that could be going over to Groseal. And a study came out, I think they published it last week, that makes me pretty confident that everyone's okay with dust. There is leachate going into the river from Hennepin Point that's pretty caustic, so they're working on cleaning that up so that they're able to restore wildlife there. But yeah, I mean, there's a lot of good folks working on it, and that's again, a partnership with Eagle at the state level, and that's mostly Eagle actually on that on that level. But yeah, I mean, it's a partnership with the federal government, EPA, US Army Corps, and Eagle, and trying to make sure we clean up a lot of our environmental stuff down here. You all know I care very deeply about the area of concern over there, the soccer field. Right now, the Army Corps has their report in front of Eagle. We have not been able to see it. Eagle is reviewing that report. But as you all know, I feel very strongly those soccer fields should be tested because of the high lead levels that they found. They believe it's safe. I, you know, I take them at their word, but more testing would make me feel better about that. So, you know, those are things that I want to work on. But yeah, overall, just really happy to be here, happy to see you all. And yeah, we'll continue to serve in whatever way that I can. I did apply to be a part of the ZBA. While I was on there, I made sure that there's an open interview process for that, and I expect to be interviewed just as everyone else that applied would be interviewed for that. But yeah, overall, just grateful for the work you all are doing and here to support any way that I can. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kyle. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? We all good there? Okay. Next be consent agenda. Kevin, if you would like to read that and get that going.
Good evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Agenda number 24-078. The consists of, the consent agenda consists of the following: to approve minutes for the January 13th, 2025 regular meeting. The minutes of the January 9th, 2025 special meeting, minutes of the January 9th, 2025 closed session. The check registers dated through January 24th, 2025. The 2025 Board of Review Income and Asset Threshold Guidelines. And lastly, the 2025 March Board of Review Mail-in Appeals for Groseal Residents.
Nevermind, I got you. Nevermind. Yep.
Okay. And that is the consent agenda report.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Is there any comments or any questions? I think Kevin is right. Okay, with none. All in favor approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, action items. The first one is the interdepartmental loan. Ross, can you just come on up, just in case after I read this? Just to give you a kind of head start. Thank you, sir. Let me, let me pull this one up. It... Okay, action item number one, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the request for an interdepartmental loan in the amount of $200,000 through Downtown Development Authority contingent upon an approved grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. As a part of the DDA's initiative to revitalize Macomb Street, the DDA purchased vacant lot on Lions and Macomb in 2009 in the amount of $70,000 for redevelopment of a park. 2022, the DDA contracted Wade Trim to develop a proposal for professional landscape, architecture, and engineering services. The final product was the result of the public input through the DDA's 2020 master plan process as well as input from the DDA Board. The DDA has opportunity to fund 50% of the total cost of the project through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's revitalization and placemaking grant due January 30th. The DDA will apply for a grant for a third time, and we will be requesting $500,000 from MEDC. Before I continue, is $500,000 still correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. To increase the chance of success, the DDA is requesting a loan of $200,000 from the Township Board to showcase the project has committed funds and demonstrated local support. The DDA has lowered its initial request of $300,000 to conserve funds for the Recreation Department to develop a playscape on Macomb Street. The DDA finds that $200,000 will be sufficient for a successful application. Okay, with that, is there any comments, questions on this? And I have a couple, but I'd like to hear from the board first, or any questions from Ross?
I have some comments.
Yeah, sure.
Do we all have some comments?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Let me start off by saying I love the park. I love the design, a big supporter of art and everything in it. I have some concerns though, because I come from an environment in business where cash is king. It can bankrupt companies. And so I am not in a position yet to even know our finances. We're going to be working through budgeting, looking at cash flow and everything else. So I just have a concern that I can't make a financial decision at this point. So I just wanted to at least explain why I'll be voting the way that I'm going to vote.
Okay. Right? Set? Ma'am? Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say so. So I want to piggyback off some of the things that was just said by Michelle, right? We don't have the budget in front of us. We haven't approved the new budget yet. I'm a little bit concerned about some of the things for the bridge, for instance, right? We have the bridge. There's other aging equipment with other departments within the township. The wastewater treatment plant, the police department, the fire department, so forth and so on. I mean, every department has their issues, and without having a solid budget in front of everybody now to review, I'm going to have a difficult time supporting it at this time. We had a discussion last week, and is there any way that this can be tabled? I understand you have a deadline.
Yep.
But is there any way this can be tabled for now until at least we get the budget process done so we can all understand where we're coming from here before we start this throw money out and we can't pull it back?
So there, there's a, for the grant submittal, there's a project budget summary. And in there, I have, you know, the $500,000 from the state if we were awarded the grant, and then the DDA's current investments. And then how else we would be able to fund this? Through the DDA TIF fund, the Tax Increment Financing Fund. So, you know, I can show, I can still show that we can still get this project done, but it's just going to lower our success rate of, of an awarded grant. Because what they like to see is, you know, not just seeing that the DDA is going to be the one that's supporting this, you know, instead of like, hey, do you have other income sources through maybe bonding, which we tried to go through and we couldn't get? That's why we're requesting this from the board. And, you know, or is there a financial support from the board? So, you know, I can still prove that the DDA can support this project through our tax increment financing, but it's just going to lower our chances of a successful application. And if we are awarded this grant at the end of, at the end of spring, I can come back and ask again once you guys are a little bit more comfortable, or just kind of check the temperature of the board at that point too. But...
Okay, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but so what I'm hearing is, is if we don't move forward with it tonight as the board, and you still go through, and the grant is denied, because I know you're on the timeline.
Right.
You can still successfully complete the project without the grant?
Yes, but we're just going to be, our budget's going to be very much exhausted. We're not going to be able to, potentially, I would still have to work things out with Teresa, but we might have to cut different services, like our DDA grant program. Our events might be cut down a little bit too. Unless we figure out a different scenario for bonding, which we would have to update our DDA TIF plan. We would just have to get a little bit more creative for this thing to work out, but it is possible.
In that event, would it still come up to a million dollar project, right? Without that grant, could it be lower than that?
Without, if we were not approved for the grant?
Correct.
Yeah, no, it would be, it would be piecemealed over, you know, probably five to six years as opposed to getting it done by 2027.
Okay.
Right? So it would be, you know, we'd probably get it done at like, you know, 2032, 2033.
Okay, because I like the plan that you presented. Don't get me wrong. I like the way the park's going to be presented, but we have the commons corrected, Macomb.
Right.
And so we can do concerts and so forth and everything there right now. We can still do that. And the park is usable as it sits, correct? Is that correct?
Right. Yep, it's just, it's just an incomplete park, that's all.
Incomplete in where we want it to be or incomplete? It's still usable, correct?
Still usable, yeah, but there's no, yeah, there's just, it's just...
And I understand it could be a lot better, right? And I understand, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to take anything away from it, but we have so many things facing our township right now.
Yep.
Financial issues.
Yep.
I just have a tough time with this one right now. Not saying in the future I won't, but right now it's a difficult, difficult decision for me. So, and that's all I have to say. I'm sorry. I'm done.
So... All the work that you're doing, I do. I sat through all of the master plan roundtables that you sponsored. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you even lowered your, your number request to support the rec commission, who's most likely going to request something similar for their playscape. Because, and you sat through them, you know, the playscape was the common denominator mentioned regularly, right? We need a playscape. Where it's located at, I guess that could be a discussion point too when it comes to money, but I'm struggling right now, the same as the others are that have spoken, with the fact that we haven't seen a budget yet. So it's really kind of hard to say, yeah, I'm okay with seeing, you know...
About the township-wide budget? When you, when you say budget, you haven't seen the township's budget?
Yep.
Okay.
Because I know there's going to be shortfalls.
Okay.
I mean, I know, just my commission alone, I know we have shortfalls. And when it comes to public safety, I just, I'd really feel more comfortable. It's just unfortunate the timing of this, right?
Oh yeah, I hear you. I mean, yep. I got you.
No, no.
So, do you want to tie tag in here? Kevin, were you ready to go? You can go ahead of me if you like.
I'm going to kind of read this a little bit so I don't forget anything. First of all, I'd like to thank Ross for, I talked with you this week, or this past week, and your diligence in supporting the DDA. Your many positive changes that I have seen on Macomb Street. The facade improvements that were sponsored by DDA, and I understand coordinated by you. I think they were great and have done a lot to make things look fresh and new. I saw that you were starting or continuing a marketing program for the businesses. I think that's very, very important. And, let's see. That, so I'm thanking you for all that you are doing. With that in mind, I'm, I'm going to say that I would also like to say thank you to the members of the Downtown Development Authority for all the time and energy they have spent planning and developing Lions Park and other Macomb Street improvements. And I think that's been going on at least for 10 years. After carefully reviewing the request for the $200,000 intergovernmental loan, as well as the plan for the continued buildout of Lions Park, I must vote no to this request. And my reasons are, as I've talked to community members, I've heard many, many islanders who feel the estimated cost of $1 million for all the current planned improvements for Lions Park is, and I quote, "just too expensive." This is, as others have said, this is the new township boards. We're just starting the budget process for fiscal year 2020, 2025, 2026. And without, we have not had five-year plans for committees and commissions. We do not know what fiscal issues and priorities for funding we may encounter during the budget process. I'm not saying that about the DDA. The DDA has been very consistent and planned what they would like to do. As a community, we're also embarking on one of the largest and most expensive undertakings in Groseal history, buying and repairing the Groseal Toll Bridge. While the last board retained experts to evaluate and make recommendations for repair and their costs, they are estimates. Islanders only need to look at the last township board meeting when we voted to lend approximately $70,000 from the revolving loan fund to correct an unforeseen accounting issue that had been overlooked for years. And it was, it just had, fortunately, our finance department picked it up and corrected it, the current finance, Teresa McLaughlin. As, as a part of this, the DDA, over the past years, couple of years, the DDA has also discussed, discussed as an option, building out Lions Park in steps over a number of years. And I know that's not the, everybody's, you know, first choice. It is something that was considered, and I think it might be something that would work. So, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Jameson, why don't you go ahead and I'll go last.
Yeah, I may be the only dissenting vote. So first, I would point out that this is the DDA's money. It's, they're not asking for a big old general fund chunk of change, and DDA money can't be diverted anywhere else, right? So we can't take money from DDA and use it to fix a bridge or put a park anywhere but on Macomb. They are asking for a loan, which will be repaid back, but for the purposes of accounting, it's their money they're spending, right? Because they're paying it back with interest. And half the money isn't even from Groseal. So assuming DDA spent the full 500K to build a million dollar park, which I don't think they ever would, and I don't think the park will ever get to a million dollars. It would cost less than most residents' homes for us to have a new and unique amenity on Groseal. So Groseal doesn't have a single legitimate park. It's like one of the most mind-blowing things about this place. You can go play with your children in the woods. You can go kick a ball around on the soccer field, but there's nowhere where you could like, sit down, hang out with your kids at a picnic table, grill something, or even like, have a picnic with your family. There's nowhere to go. So I think Groseal needs a park. I think that what we were working on to kind of build a park in Lions Park and a rec park across the street that would have provided both sets of those amenities for both children and adults would have been a really great thing. So... And finally, the, the budget in question, the budget this will be coming from is this year's budget. It is done. It is available for review. You can see it. So it's already been earmarked and set aside in the revolving loan fund. Now, could we divert the revolving loan fund to other expenditures in the next budget? Absolutely. But I think we would be taking away from our departments the ability for them to do any kind of large projects. And don't forget, I mean, we've, we've loaned $700,000 to the airport over the past couple of years. We've loaned money to recreation. We loaned money to DDA. That is the purpose of this revolving loan fund, is to enable these smaller departments with weaker budgets to be able to execute these larger projects in a timely fashion and capture things such as the grant Ross has been talking about. So, and that's my, that's my defense of the parks.
Thank you, Jameson. Obviously, as you can see, it's probably going to get voted down, but I'd just like to still give my opinion and explain a couple of things, Ross. I've been looking at this since I was a trustee, because this has been going on for many years. And Ross and I have talked many times on some different areas, different angles, and he thought it was in the best interest, first off, to bring it down 100,000, which actually takes it down a couple hundred thousand, what can be spent totally then from, from this fund. Now, I did meet with Teresa, our finance director, and there's a reason that we do have a fund itself to loan to other departments. These interdepartmental funds are to help other departments, and I fully understand that, and I think that's a really good thing for a township city to have. And it's well worth it to get some of these projects that they may not be able to fund upfront, but they obviously pay us back with, then we negotiate an interest rate that, you know, we're not going to lose on, unfortunately, we're not going to give it to you for nothing, and we get interest on our money. Now, with that said, what I saw was last week, and I did read this in the action item, about the piece of property that you're looking for, for the playscape, which I think would be a fantastic thing for the kids. We now believe we're working on, and it looks like it, I'm hoping it will go through, a funding mechanism to pay for the land, not a loan. And then we have a group on Groseal who spoke with me that want to pay for the equipment. So with that, again, that knocks off a couple more hundred grand in, in a departmental loans. You knocked off 100 grand, and I just thought that that was palatable, maybe for the group or for Groseal to see, because I really wanted that park done. Now, another thing that, I know there was a concern, I, we spoke about, Kevin, is, and Margaret too, we spoke about this. Maybe some of the things that are going in that park are negotiable with us. I mean, those are negotiable items. I mean, it doesn't mean that everything in, say, your plan, just as in a master plan, doesn't mean it all comes to fruition. It has to do with money. It has to do with purchases. So Ross and I talked about that too. So I, I thought that with all this, it was palatable for me to vote yes tonight, to have this loan, to move forward, and to move forward, and, and we also talked, again, the playscape, what possibly could be going in across the street with the purchase of that property and then the equipment put in. I mean, I thought it was a win-win, and that's just my opinion right now. I respect everybody's opinion on the board, and if there's nothing else to take about, we don't have to take a, a roll call on something like this, do we?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Are, are you saying that there won't need to be a loan for the property for the rec department?
Well, that's what we're trying to work on, because what we're trying to do, Ross and I were meeting, and we were trying to get this lowered, if you will, so the less comes out of the township.
Right, and I appreciated that.
Yeah, we, and Derek also, we talked about this, and there may be a funding mechanism, not with a loan of any kind, to purchase that property. So that, that's what we're working on. But it all, again, this is not all set in stone, but with that, I had a, a vision that we could get the park done, to a certain extent. Across the street, the playscape done with the equipment, and have it tied in right there at the, at Lions and Macomb Street. That's where that was from.
Can I say something else?
Certainly.
Okay. So we have Centennial Farms, correct? I mean, it has a playscape. It has the grilling areas that you were talking about. So I mean, we do have things like that for people, the families to gather. There's a dog park over there, and there's a lot of land over at Centennial Farms. That's not going to cost us any more money. So I mean, we have an event like that, and we have the commons. And again, I'm not knocking, I like the idea. Don't get me wrong. But it's not that we don't have it. Maybe it's not advertised properly, but we have it already. We'll be, we'll be duplicating, we'll be duplicating what we have already.
I don't really think so, because the Centennial Farms isn't anywhere near Macomb. It doesn't draw anybody down there. It doesn't advance DDA's directive to try to improve the Macomb Street corridor. But having a, you know, the pocket park, and maybe it doesn't have to look exactly like the drafts that Ross has, right? I mean, I'm sure we can all have input on that. But having that pocket park with a deliberate crosswalk and a parking area and a playscape across the street creates an anchor right in the middle of Macomb that everything else can start being, being built out around. And I just don't think $200,000 is like, that much money for this, right? Like, you, good luck finding a house in Groseal for less than $200,000, let alone a park. So from the fact that they're asking for a loan, they're not even asking for straight general fund dollars, I think it's a pretty reasonable cost benefit, right? Like the, the community, this is good for the community, in my opinion, right? But I'm just one...
And it very well could be, and I'm not saying that, but, but also what could be good for the community is to, I'm not against acquiring the property across the street. I think that could be a good revenue, generating resource for the township, and it would benefit everybody. I'm not sure that a, a playscape would do that, especially when we already have one. We just need to advertise it and build that out even more. I mean, and I appreciate the fact that somebody's going to donate the equipment. I mean, that's, that's amazing, right?
Yeah, they are working with us.
That's absolutely amazing. But why can't we build out what we already have, advertise it, and get it out there to let everybody know what we do have already? And then maybe do something a little bit different to help benefit the entire township and, and create something of a revenue generating source of the property across the street. I mean, that's kind of what my thoughts are. I'm not knocking what you're saying. It's just a different idea.
I, I think the problem with, at least my problem with Centennial Farms as it is now, is that it doesn't feel like somewhere you can hang out, right? It feels like someone else's property. It's not like a super, come and hang out and, and play some ball with your kid and grill some hot dogs and whatnot kind of place. Like, it, it just isn't. It's a working horse farm that someone rents from us that they, they do that at, right?
I've had my child's birthday party down there, and we'll grill... I've had my child's birthday party down there that one grilled out, so I mean, I, I've used it for that purpose, I've done that. So, but I understand what you're saying, but I, I think it needs to be maybe marketed a little bit better.
If I may, again, too, this is a cash flow deal. I mean, we need to say, do we want to spend 200,000 or, or give up the right to that 200,000 in cash for up to seven years, or do we need to spend it on other things? And right now, I don't know what those other things are, because we need to go through a budget process and get a heads up on any capital improvements or different things that we're going to be doing in the future. So, you know, I know in every marriage, there's a, one person controls a person's strings and the other one wants things, but with me, I want to know what's coming down the road, and I don't want to ever put us in a position where we don't have cash for something that becomes an emergency. So it's that lack of knowledge that scares me off. I do want to do more things in Lyons Park, and I also do want to park across the street. I just want to go about it in a fiscally responsible way.
Unfortunately, Kevin had to step out for an emergency phone call, but I, we can vote anyway, I know how this is going to go, and that's fine. So I'm going to vote, take a vote without Kevin. So our action item number one, interdepartmental loan, all in favor, say.
Is he not coming back?
Well, it was, oh, he is not walking back now, but he, yeah, should I just wait a second? Would that be better? I mean, I didn't mean to, no offense, but it's, it would've been three to two or four to two, so, it's the same, you see, so, okay.
Kevin, we're going to take a vote now.
That's all right, take your time. Okay, for interdepartmental loan, action item number one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that's four to against, okay. We'll do more talking about that, I'm sure, in the future. Thank you for all the information, all the comments. Okay, special land use, number two, action item, since it came from planning, who?
Bill sits on planning, I can read it.
Bill is on the planning, Jameson, you want to take it for Bill?
The Groseal, oh, I move that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the special land use, Roger, special land use request for Island Powadice slash U-Haul application in accordance with Chapter 285, Article 22.3 of Township Ordinances. This is regarding the property at 9510 Gro Road. The proposed business is for an equipment, trucks and trailer rental facility with outdoor storage, so it's adding a U-Haul business adjacent to Iwin, Island Powadice, Iwin Powadice. Section 9.3A lists equipment rental, including trucks and trailers, as a by right use of A1 District. However, the inclusion of outdoor storage for the equipment requires special land use review and approval per Section 9.3 Charlie 5. As outlined in Article 22.3, the Planning Commission reviewed the special land use request and has provided the recommendation to the Township Board following a public hearing. The Commission unanimously approved the special land use slash site plan application at its January 3 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the board on this? Everybody know where this is at?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just have the quick comment that I think Island Powadice has demonstrated their ability to manage a business and integrate with the community, and I think a, a U-Haul service here would actually be a needed service provided here on the island. So it's just keeping, keeping island money on the island, in my opinion.
And I, I would agree with you, Jameson, it's, you know, right down the street from a storage facility, down here, obviously, that you can have commercial business, and it, it kind of fits in, so I have no problem with any of these issues. Plus, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to move this to the Township Board, so, is there any comments from the board, anything?
No, I agree with you both.
Okay. Action item number two, special land use, and it's 9510 for the record, 9510, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carried. Next item is to reappoint Board of Review members. I guess I will, I can take that one if.
You want me to take it? I can take it for you.
Oh, go ahead, I have it pulled up. Go ahead, if you want to take it, yeah.
So reappoint Board of Review members, so the recommendations is to reappoint the Board of Review members, Susie Armarek, Amy Longton, and Duncan Murdock, for a two-year term from January 2025 to January 2027. You want me to go through the history and purpose?
Yeah, hold on, need a second?
Second.
Thank you, go ahead.
History and purpose, Board of Review consists of three members and appoints, or I'm sorry, three member appointments are for two years, beginning January 1 of each odd number year per Michigan compiled laws. Implementation schedule will be for fiscal years 2025 through 2027, there are no attachments with this.
Okay, are there any questions or any comments on this issue?
One comment that I mentioned earlier.
Go ahead.
So I'll, I'll be voting in favor of this, but I was just wondering if going forward, if we could have just a brief bio or even a couple lines on each person, something that says, have they been on the committee before? If so, how long? Do they have unique qualifications? Because some of the people that will come before us, we don't know personally and haven't seen their work, so, just a real brief bio.
That's fine, we can do something. Again, these are reappointments, I would hope that the, Derek, if you'd like to jump in, but I would hope that in the beginning, when whoever reviewed their applications would have done this anyway.
Yeah.
And these are just up every two years, as I see it.
And it's a fair point, some of you may not be familiar with these individuals, so we'll be sure to do that in the future, regardless if they're appointments or reappointments. Yep.
Appreciate it.
All right, so action item number three, reappointment Board, Board of Review members, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Action item number four, cellular consultant RFQ. Margaret, did you say you were handling?
Yep. So the recommendation is the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the distribution of the request for proposals, legal services, cell tower lease consultant proposal request.
Second.
The history and purpose and explanation is the attached document is a solicitation for proposals to provide consulting services to assist with lease agreements for the township's cell tower assets. And there's quite a few attachments, I've gone through them all, but, you know.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, that's fine. Is there any comments? I have one, but if the board would like to comment first.
Um, I just, I'm going to throw this out there, that the reason I had, you know, asked that we do this is because this had been on an agenda, I don't know, maybe in October or so, and, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we, we have these assets. I want to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for their buck, and, you know, that was why I asked if we had any contracts out with respect to anybody managing these, and, you know, just, just wanted to make sure we were, we're getting our, our money's worth out of them.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
Joe, just that, I went through these, and I read this RFQ and the one on bridge staffing. I don't know who wrote those, but they did a really nice job writing them.
Oh, I did.
Did you? Joe, you did a great job, but I'm pretty sure you didn't write them.
No, I think Derek did, yeah, no, that's okay, yeah, it was Derek.
Well, Derek, you did a great job, and also, the robust purchasing policy within them.
Yes, excellent job. Okay, I would just like to make a comment on this. I received a letter from Mr. Forster, and he said he would like to resign and won't be putting in any, I guess, reapplication, or, I wasn't around on the board even when he started with Groseal Township, but he said, due to numerous reasons, he would like to resign any more work contracted to the township, but he just thanked us all, and I'd like to thank Jeff for all the years, I know this goes back, numerous boards, I would believe, it definitely was before even our, the last one I was on as a trustee, so I hope the best for you, Jeff, and good luck in the future, and I just wanted to let you know that, so. Any other comments? If none? Okay, so, this is number number four, action item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, number five, bridge staffing, staffing, I am sorry, I'm going to take that one then. Let me pull that up again real fast, I seem to keep losing the connection here. Speaking of cell towers, can I ask a question real fast? I know this is off, but we have cell towers all over Groseal, and we're going to start looking into connections real soon, that's all I have to say. Sound like Forrest Gump, but that's all I got to say about that. All right. Groseal Township Board hereby approves and authorizes the distribution of two proposals of operations of Groseal Toll Bridge. These two proposals are titled Operation and Maintenance of Groseal Toll Bridge and Groseal Toll Bridge Staffing Proposal.
Second?
Thank you.
Before you guys start your conversation, it, it, may I suggest a friendly amendment, and that would be to add on their contingent upon a review and approval by township's legal counsel.
Okay. Can we add that, Brian? Brian's got that? We got a second?
Second.
Okay, the attached, second by Kevin on the friendly amendment.
I think it has to be made by a member of the board.
Okay.
So Kevin can make the amendment, and I'll second it.
Okay. The attached documents are proposals for the operation of the Groseal Toll Bridge. The RFPs take slightly different approaches in their requests for services the board members have. Any additions, deletions to the document, please be prepared to discuss your suggested modifications. So, attached were the two, I hope that all of you went through them, and what happened previous is we had a special meeting, and we talked about what we'd like to see in these RFPs for these two areas. One would be to staff the bridge, one would be to, let's call it middle management, for lack of a better term, and staff the bridge. So, what Derek did is wrote up two different RFPs, and an excellent job he did, and these will go out with our vote, and that is basically the history of it. Is there any comments from the board on anything regarding this one? Nothing?
No, they look pretty solid to me.
Yeah, they, they were solid. Bridge staffing operations, RFP, action item number five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you. Okay, number six, let me pull, I'll take six, too, let me pull that up. No, I don't, I'll show you why, yeah, yeah, no, I'll, I'll show you why. Okay, this is a resolution by Groseal Township Board of Trustees, request to the United States Coast Guard, as seen in your packets, the letter, so I'm not, it's a two and a half page, I don't want to bore everybody, and if I could get a second, I'll go right to the history.
I'll give you a second.
Okay. This is a resolution by Groseal Township Board. Talk about losing it in the cell. Okay, hold on. I apologize, I'm, I've got, what? No, no, I'm just having trouble, it, it keeps clicking off. Resolution by the Groseal Township Board of Trustees to request the United States Coast Guard modify the opening and closing schedule of the Groseal Toll Bridge during the duration of the spring 2025 repair work to Wayne County Public Bridge. The resolution requests an exemption from any regular schedule of openings during the rush hour periods of the day. So what this basically is requested, and I spoke to these, well, actually, it's one gentleman, I'm, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, it's Suli or Sewell, but anyway, I spoke to the gentleman years ago, and he's from Cleveland, and requested that the Coast Guard give us approval so they would not open every so often. As you know, believe it or not, the boat traffic takes precedent over vehicular traffic. I know that sounds crazy, in a bridge, that's the only way to Groseal, or two bridges, the only way to Groseal. So what this request is, asking them to modify, if you will, their openings, and they have some type of rule, and, and, you know, I haven't seen it in three or four years, not sure if their rules changed, but it's, in the summertime, it was, am I correct, Eric? It's like maybe every 15 or 20 minutes or so, that if a boat is there, not that they open it, but if a boat is there, that they have to open it. So we're asking them to modify this, and this is the resolution, I do know this resolution does need a roll call vote, but is there anything from the board that you'd like to ask, or anything you see, or any questions? Okay, no questions on the resolution, what I'm going to do is, we will take a roll call vote, and we'll start with all in favor, Margaret, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Joe, aye. Jameson?
Aye.
Mickey?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous pass, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for the action items, we have no discussion items tonight. Jameson, you are up for your report.
Okay. So the Recreation Commission will meet on 6 February, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will meet on the 20th of February. I guess we'll see what we can figure out for parks. I'll talk with, with Ross and with the rec team, and maybe we can still move forward with something else with the playscape, or even in the same area, but Lyons Park remaining the same as it is. And I hope everyone enjoys the President's Day holiday on 17 February, one of my favorite.
All set, sir? All right, thank you, Jameson. Kevin?
This, this is the Treasurer's Report. We continue to collect winter tax bill payments and late summer tax payments at Township Hall. Winter tax bills are due February 14. To date, we have collected approximately 59% of the total winter tax roll distributions of, or, yeah, distributions of these tax collections have been sent timely to Wayne County and the Groseal School District. Winter tax deferments are still available, eligible residents can apply for an extension to the, of the winter tax due date of February 14, 2025, to April 30, 2025. Forms are available online at groseal.com until February 14, 2025. Please don't forget to register your pet soon, 2025 pet licenses are available at the Treasurer's Office. The free, the fee increases from $6 to $12 on February 1. Be sure to bring current rabies vaccination certificate for your pet when purchasing your license. And that is it for the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, trustees report, Mark, you're first.
So I'm the liaison for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have no scheduled meeting for January, as of right now, we have no scheduled meeting for February. If that holds true, we, I plan on trying to set up some type of training or some kind of a review for the board, but hopefully we'll have something going on in February, but as of right now, no appeals have been filed.
All set, sir?
Yes, sir, that concludes my report.
Okay, Margaret?
So, I've had a long one, hopefully I can get it to you quick, but I think it's very important. So I'm a 26-year resident, and, oh, sorry, sorry. And, so I'm a 26-year resident, and I really did not fully realize how our police department, how supportive they are during medical runs. And our police department goes on all medical runs, and they support the fire department, and I am not in any way minimizing what the fire department does, they are volunteers, and they also work very, very hard, and I have tremendous respect for all of them. Being a volunteer department, however, means our police can get to emergency calls in however, means our police can get to emergency calls in most cases first because they're already on the road. It also means they work very well together. So, I'm gonna give you an example that I found very, very important. Um, there was a fire, uh, the past weekend and the first on the scene was our police department. Uh, Sergeant Vasquez, Officer Blackman, and Dispatcher Brozek, uh, provided critical initial support. Uh, Sergeant Vasquez and Officer Blackman cleared the home of people and pets prior to the fire department getting there. And they apprised, uh, the, uh, the fire department that were on their way about the scene and gave them very important information. Dispatcher Brozek gave the same. She let them know it was very icy out that, that very, very early morning and they were aware of what they would be facing when they got there in addition to those road conditions. That quick response mitigated critical loss. It prevented the fire from becoming uncontrollable. And their dedication, I want to just say, I commend them. Um, I'm really impressed and grateful, um, to be on the, the police commission. And again, I want to say the leadership between police and fire has impressed me tremendously. Um, another thing really quick is, uh, I had requested to go on a ride along and, uh, I had been set up for that. And we, we did two shifts. So I was able to do a day shift and then move into the midnight shift. And, um, I will say again, I cannot get over how, how well our police officers work and how they assess a situation. They can provide a calming and supportive presence. Um, I went on a medical run and Sergeant Piazza and Officer White, um, their professional support, they assessed the situation before fire got there. Fire got there as quickly as they could. They also were so empathetic and worked so well, um, together that I, I just, again, I cannot emphasize it more how important it is for us to truly support, um, not only fire, but our police. And I think they, they sometimes don't get that, um, that same level of respect. And I truly want to make sure that we all, because I did not ever fully understand how much that they actually do. And, um, I think it's really important everybody know that. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Margaret. Go ahead. Mickey, you are next.
Okay, um, yeah, actually, speaking of the fire department, I went out there, um, Friday to talk to them about some metrics. And, um, I just want to give a special shout out to Chief Camilleri, to Fire Marshal Bob, and to firefighter Dawn. They had gone on four calls in a row along with the team. Um, I think they started, it was around four in the morning. And when I dropped off the metrics, it was around three in the afternoon. So they were still, they did those four calls and then worked their shift. And, um, they looked tired, but, um, they were kind enough to tell me about the runs and what they did. And, um, just very grateful for all of them, along with the firefighting team and the police officers as well. Um, with them, um, their next meeting is going to be February thirteenth. And right now, we are working on sending up interviews for the chief's position. Um, for Greenways Open Space, we just had a special meeting on the master plan. So we're kinda going through each point in it and saying, you know, what our feedback will be on it. And then we'll ask to meet to Ross, um, to go over that. Their next meeting is February fourth. And Kyle, in line with your comments, um, on Wednesday, the, there's a Downriver Town Hall, um, on environmental issues. It's at six PM at twenty-seven hundred Westfield Road, um, at the Westfield Activity Center. So folks may want to join that. And that's it. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. Township Managers' Report, Derek?
Uh, good evening, supervisor, members of the board. Just a few items for this evening. Um, everybody should have gotten a push notification this afternoon. Um, those of you that are a member of Code Red, um, there was a, a bit of an error in the, in the first, um, push, um, so we corrected it with the second. But the information was still, um, uh, valid for, um, the fact that we have a water main break. Um, actually GLWA has a water main break in Riverview. And why that is significant is because there are two feeds to Grozeal Township, um, from GLWA, uh, one in Trenton and one in Riverview. Um, so the township does have redundancy from that standpoint. Um, but the fact that there is a water main break on one of those two feeds, um, what could potentially happen is, um, those especially on the north end might receive some discoloration in the water, um, tomorrow while they repair that main. And, uh, the result of that is normally on the north end, you have your feed coming in servicing the north end of the island. And then on the south end, you have the feed coming in at the, the county bridge that feeds the south and the middle end of the island. Um, when we have a disruption in, in one of those main feeds, basically you're being fed from the opposite, um, end. So what it can actually do is reverse the flow on the island and stir some material up. So the water is, is still safe. It just might have some rust in it. Um, so watch for that. If you do have discoloration, uh, just run your cold water till it clears up. And then, um, don't do any laundry because it can stain your clothes. Um, just wanted to let the residents know about that. There's no risk of low pressure, uh, necessarily, or, um, a disruption in, in water service. Uh, it's just a little bit of a change in the way that the water is supplied to the island while they're doing that repair. Um, so that's what that push was all about yesterday. Um, also, we do have a water main break on Macomb, Macomb and Park Lane. Um, so that'll be repaired tomorrow. So if you can avoid that area, because it looks like they might have to cut out a portion of the road to do the repair. Um, so, uh, keep that in mind when you're traveling, um, Macomb Street. Try to stay away from that intersection because that work will be ongoing tomorrow. Um, I believe I sent an email to the board about, um, the bonds, uh, and the receipt of the bond bids last week. Um, those were received in on the twenty-third. Um, so we do have a low bidder, um, for those bonds. Um, the closing for the bonds is scheduled for February thirteenth. Um, and that's in anticipation of closing, um, on the bridge purchase, uh, on March thirty-first. So that's not the closing of the bridge, but the closing of the bridge purchase on March thirty-first. I've received a lot of questions from residents about when that purchase is actually gonna take place. That is the scheduled date. Um, in addition to that, we've also received a number of phone calls from residents that may have interest in purchasing, um, municipal bonds. Um, our suggestion is that you contact your financial advisor. Um, they can go to the bond market and, uh, locate those bonds hopefully. Um, they might not be available on the market until after the closing of the bonds on February thirteenth. So they might not be visible until the fourteenth or so. Uh, but if you want to, yeah, if you want, if you're interested, you, that'd be the best route to go is to get ahold of your financial advisor. Um, just wanted to take a quick moment, moment to recognize, um, a fellow staff, or a previous staff member, a fellow staff member of mine, uh, and a lot of us here at the township, um, our previous DPS director, Lorinda Benito, um, she passed away in December. Um, she worked for the Township of Grozeal for, uh, twenty-five years, was a DPS director, I think, for at least four or five years. Um, she retired in two thousand nineteen, um, and, uh, unfortunately passed away in December. Um, she was only sixty-five years of age, um, so she was fairly young. Um, but, um, she was a tremendously dedicated employee to the township, worked all twenty-five years here. Um, and, uh, she was actually the first DPS, female DPS director that we ever had. So, um, our heartfelt condolences go out to her family and I really want to recognize the work that she did for us and, and, and the benefit, uh, to the community that, that she provided. So, um, I wanted to touch base, um, with the community about that. Um, speaking of DPS, we have a meeting on February eleventh. That's at seven o'clock in this room. We have a pretty full agenda already. Uh, that'll be posted, uh, online for everybody to view. Uh, and if you are interested, feel free to, uh, attend that meeting. Um, I believe Joe will probably talk about the meeting on February fifth about the bridge operations during the free bridge closer, so, closure. So I won't mention anything about that. But with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you for mentioning about, uh, Lorinda. It's very nice of you. Okay, um, Supervisor's Report. I just have a couple items I want to just explain first. Um, as some of you have seen, um, we have pushed out on Facebook a couple messages. We'll continue to do that. And I fully understand there's might be some people that don't have Facebook. Um, so we're trying to do it. I have Brian. Um, he puts things on the website. Um, it's on YouTube. Am I missing anything, Brian? But we have, we're trying to hit all the areas we can. And, pardon me?
Instagram.
Okay, yeah, that's, you've already talked above my head. So, um, thank you for that. But I do want to mention, on February fifth, we're going to have a meeting in this room, seven o'clock. And it is about the bridge closure that's gonna happen right around April first. And once again, remember, it's pushed to about April first and it's eight weeks instead of four weeks. But this will be for all business owners that get truck deliveries. Now, anybody's welcome, obviously. Um, any residents, but there'll be more information later to come out for the residents to help them. But Derek and I have already been working with all the township issues, the refuse, the, the sewer treatment. And I've been working on private individuals that actually are getting semi trucks or moving vans, things like that. And Derek has been working, um, with Macomb business owners. I had Ross put out an email to all the Macomb business owners. I'm gonna be talking to Janelle also, and I'm not sure, but we talked about all the businesses at Grozeal Airport that might get deliveries. Not only for the airport, but even private. So this meeting, once again, is February fifth, Wednesday night, seven PM. And Derek and I will be going over a plan on how we're going to get some of these overweight vehicles over the bridge during these two months. And we're gonna explain everything, try to fit everybody in at certain times. Um, we're gonna do it. It's gonna be tough, obviously. It's gonna be a headache. It's gonna slow things down a little bit. But this is what it's gonna take for all of us to work together to get all the people on Macomb Street, all the people down here at the airport, they get deliveries to thrive in their business. So they don't have to shut their doors, uh, because either their shelves are empty or they can't get deliveries and so on and so forth. So that's what that, uh, definitely will be about. Again, February fifth, Wednesday night, seven PM in this room. We're also gonna be televising it and it'll be played later, uh, just in case you can't make it. So, we want everybody to know about this. So we're gonna do everything possible to get this information out. Um, one more small thing that we have. Uh, we talked last meeting about, um, I still got more complaints, especially from the landscape individuals with trailers going over that, um, bump at Meridian and Ferry. Well, when I requested the county to take a look at it, they came back and said it was within tolerance. Um, hey, I'm just gonna say, you know how we've dealt with the county and there's new people on both sides of the table, but that ain't happening. So, we are having a meeting with our engineers, the county, Derek and I, and we're going to see how we can alleviate that problem because we know it's not correct. That's all I'm gonna say on that. But in the next couple of weeks, we will have that meeting. And I hope we're gonna have a nice, cordial, friendly, we're gonna fix it kinda deal. And I think that's, uh, what we deserve out here. And actually, we deserve nothing less, um, when something is done in that manner. So, um, that is it for, uh, my report and, uh... Oh, yes. Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I've forgotten one thing that's very important. Today's my daughter Nikki's birthday. Happy birthday, Nikki. I love you and I'm so sorry I had to leave dinner to come to the meeting. It's very important.
I'm kidding. Anybody else wanna shout out or, you know, we good?
No, I think we're good.
I'll sing happy birthday to her.
Okay. Um, is there anybody in the audience that has any public comment? Um, if there isn't, actually Kyle, I hate to embarrass you. We're gonna do this in reverse. Could you go to the podium for me a second? I have, just want to make sure. I'm gonna do it this way instead of calling you later tonight or tomorrow. I just appreciate you working on, so this is my comment to you. Appreciate you working on, um, all the environmental things that you have done in the past. We've worked on a few and you've actually assisted me and really moved things forward. I do want to talk to you about the leaching from the north end. I had a meeting about the leaching from Wyandotte's property. Okay? And I want to contact them, if I can't do it this week, it'll be next week, about what is occurring at Hennebun Point. Okay? So if we could, no, I just, I want to say thank you publicly to you because you've really, you've really reached out and you've really done a lot of work that, that I, I don't see others doing. And, and you've assisted me in the past when we were both trustees. And, uh, it, you've really helped and it worked out. So I'm gonna get ahold of you. I need to know some more information because I'm going to now, um, contact them to further, uh, let them know, we had one meeting, but I, I want to know what follow-up and what has been done since our last meeting, if that's okay?
Yes, no, thank you.
So tomorrow or whenever you're free and...
Yeah, and if I may, that is probably one of the biggest issues facing the Detroit River. There's a, it's called BASF. North works out of Wyandotte, like you said.
Yes.
Um, widely acknowledged, uh, that, that heavy chemicals are going into the Detroit River. Um, they, they've been under an EPA consent order for decades now to fix it. They have not fixed it. Um, so there's a lot of pressure for them too. Um, but yeah, that is one of the more serious issues. I'm glad you're thinking of raising Hennebun Point along with it while it's not as serious. Um, it is, it is reflective of the issues they need to be considering and that's the one that's in our, our wheelhouse. So thank you.
Now, we did talk about that, not to slow things down. I'll be done just in a minute. But there is a remediation plan for both. But I want to follow up to see what, what you know and what you found because I want to follow up with them again. Because I just, it's important. It's Grozeal. It's, I mean, how much closer is it? It's right there. So again, thanks for your help though. I really appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you all for the support. I felt the support not just from you all, but from the public on it. And so it's nice to have that, to have things that we, we know all folks agree on and that we can work together on. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Did you, did you want to come and introduce yourself to, while you're here? Just, I mean, you'll see.
My name is Philippieters and I'm just here on behalf of Representative Lansing. She wasn't able to make it today. And, um, if anyone on the board or anyone in the audience has any questions you'd like for me to take back to the representative or to Lansing, just let me know. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to give you a chance to see your face and your name for the people.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Could you make sure we have your contact info? You don't have to put it on like TV or anything, but could you send us an email or?
For sure.
Okay.
Do you have any cards on you, by chance?
Um, I don't have any business cards on me at the moment, but I can pass it out after the meeting.
Get the, uh, telephone number later. Thank you. Yeah, that would be great.
I'll send that email tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there any, anybody else? Uh, this is fun voir during the audience. I've never, I've never done this in reverse. Any, does anybody else have anything to say tonight? About anything? We good? Okay. Need a motion to adjourn though?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody. Okay.